We're going to call the Tuesday, October 4, 2016 Manistee City Council meeting to order. Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Shall we please take the roll?
Mayor Kenny?
Here.
Councilmember Beeden?
Here.
Councilmember Zelinski?
Here.
Councilmember Gudsky?
Yes, here.
Councilmember Smith?
Here.
Councilmember Whitlam?
Here.
Councilmember Paniac?
Here.
City manager?
Here.
City attorney?
Here.
My names director?
Yes, we're here.
Public safety director?
I'm here.
Thank you. Public hearings, we have none. Cuz in comments on agenda-related items, is there anyone who'd like to comment tonight's agenda? Please come forward and state your name, please.
Carol Pascoe, Sixten Screw Street. I'm commenting on TJ's Pub outside alcohol sales. I just want to say how delighted I am that they are putting tables out and hopefully you will grant them their request tonight. I think it's a wonderful thing. It adds a lot to an alcohol town to have tables outside of a restaurant.
So, anyone else would like to comment?
That's what she said.
Next, we'll move on to the consent agenda. All agenda items marked with an asterisk are on the consent agenda considered by the city manager to be routine matters. Prior to approving the consent agenda, any member of council may have an item from the consent agenda removed and taken up during the regular portion of the meeting. Consent agenda items include approval of minutes, cash balances, revenue expenses, notification regarding next work session, and consideration of board of director candidates for the MML liability property pool.
I make a motion that council approve the consent agenda. Ask for signature.
I have a motion by councilmember Gudsky, supported by councilmember Zelinski, to approve the consent agenda as presented. I would like to remove item C and take that up during another course because there really wasn't a formal action. They just asked us to either support or come up with our own names to that conference. So, it was like an either/or. So, I think we need to either decide yes, we'll support their consideration, or come up with two names. So, that's why I'd like to remove it from the consent agenda.
I'll make the move if we do that.
Second. I have a motion by councilmember Zelinski, supported by councilmember Beeden to remove item C. Is there any other discussion? Shall we please take the roll?
Councilmember Beeden?
Yes.
Councilmember Zelinski?
Yes.
Councilmember Gudsky?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitlam?
Yes.
Councilmember Paniac?
Yes.
And Mayor Kenny?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Unfinished business, we have none. New business. Consideration of TJ's Pub outside alcohol sales. The owner of TJ's Pub has been using the sidewalk along Maple Street side of the building for the summer. She would not like to include the sale of alcohol in the same space. Council support is requested for application. A hand-drawn map of the location was included in her packet. Is there a motion to authorize TJ's Pub to use approximately 50 feet of sidewalk space adjacent to Maple Street side of the building to serve food and alcohol to consumers?
I'll make that motion. I'll second.
I have the motion by councilmember Whitlam, supported by councilmember Gudsky, to approve TJ's Pub's request. Is there any discussion?
I've looked at a number of communities that have dealt with this issue, and I find one of the common threads that they have in these communities is that they've developed guidelines and in several instances, ordinances that regulate the process and make it available to all licensed pubs or places that serve alcohol at the same time without approving by exception or one at a time. I think that's probably a prudent action from my point of view. I think when we do things like this to enhance the downtown area and support the businesses, I think sometimes it needs to be well-designed and organized. So, you know, I think that should be a consideration.
I have no objections to having it. I would just like to see it to be fair across the board for everybody. And as I look on the internet, I see many towns that have it, and it's an asset to the community, but they have guidelines. In some areas, they even charge. They charge a large sum to use that city space. A couple of the concerns that I have, one of the concerns I have is that it's DDA compliant or ADA compliant, where the FODI Disability Act, in the case where the pub is, it's 10 feet. 10 feet, 1 inch exactly, I measured it to the curb, and you're going to use 4 feet plus flowers. And that's okay, as long as there's certain ways you can get around that limitation. The other places are like 13 feet, 13 feet, 10 inches, I think is the largest one that I looked at that they have tables. So, space is important. I'm just looking at fairness, that everybody is treated the same, that if another restaurant would like to do that, or the brewery would like to do that, I think, I just think it's fair to do that. I don't think the DDA was involved. I would like to hear what they have to say about it. I would like to hear what the committee has to say, to give them an opportunity to have input. And I would like to see that all done in a timely manner so that next summer, you can put your tables out and you can do that. So, if I look at what your design is, you have 4 feet, then you're going to put flowers on the edge of that 4 feet, which is even going to shorten it up. So, now, okay.
Just at the corners?
Okay.
And then one in the middle. It really won't shorten the distance. You know, the flower pot isn't going to be standing like way on the other side of the table.
And don't misinterpret it. I'm on your side, okay?
Yep.
Okay. Wheelchairs are approximately, just about 3 feet wide, the average. Okay, so now you're down to that 6-foot barrier, you've got 6 foot to the curb. The curb bothers me that somebody might roll off that and maybe fall and go into the street. Most cities will have barriers, like here's the curb, they have a buildup so you can't get off of that. There's all kinds of ways of doing that. I just think they have a uniform policy and procedure in place is important so that everybody can do that. And not just for alcohol, it's food and/or alcohol. Might have more restaurants open up. I know I talked with Cops for Donuts. They would love to have tables out there in front of their place to have people have coffee and donuts when they decide to move here.
Aren't there a lot of places, like Goodies and Fillmore and the Outpost, they all have tables?
Right, they do. And that's why I think it's a good reason why that we have those rules in place so that we're all playing by the same rules. That's just my opinion, that's just my take on it.
I would have to agree with you guys. I think we need to have a policy in place where even the nonprofits or businesses that are allowed to do that, go back to them and say, this is a new policy, you know, we have to go by this now so that we are all fair. So, the ones that have already been approved, go back. But we need to make up a document saying that so everybody knows the rules and fair.
If I could throw a log on the fire, when we started the discussion, I went to Denise Blaissey, I think that's in my packet, Denise said the DDA and the business of downtown encouraged sidewalk sales. The only issue here was alcohol. So, there is a fairness in terms of restaurant downtown. It's approved through the zoning. There's no restriction in them coming here and have to come here to get those restaurant tables. The only issue really here is alcohol sales. So, it's not the same with Goodies or...
Not being disrespectful, sir, but what I'm saying is that I think there should be rules.
I saw the discussion maybe going off in a different direction away from this specific topic, whether it be alcohol sales versus the use of the stuff for any table. Because I think that if I understood Denise properly, when I talked to her and the city manager, was anybody can use the sidewalk adjacent to their building to sell food in their wares that way. In this case, it was just alcohol. So, I just want to make sure that we are all on the same page.
I talked with Mr. Barry Lynn last night, who is now the chair of the DDA, and he said he had no input into the matter. So, that's where I'm getting that information from.
I did not ask DDA that. I talked to Denise, because I was only even sharing a mirror picture of Denise.
I have nothing against it. I think it enhances the community. I just think it ought to be fair across the board. We ought to have, we ought to have some guidelines in place that it all follow.
But I think that's what too often I was trying to reiterate, that we already have those through the zoning. And it's up to each individual business how they want to do that.
And then the liquor control commission determines, from my point of view, if they determine issuing the license, if we permit it, so...
They're just trying to...
I felt like we covered up a basis in this, in the investigation. I felt like we had done our due diligence on that and brought you much information we could do, particularly with the zoning and with the liquor control commission ready to approve the license extension if the city's legal to sidewalk, so...
Yeah, their purpose is only to add alcohol so they can drink.
They've been serving food out there all summer, using the sidewalk, as other people have.
And this is to be able to allow them to serve them a drink if they're sitting over there.
The state mission would extend their license to do sidewalk sales for alcohol. So, anyway, I did, I thought I did my due diligence on that. If I missed a point, I apologize, but I thought that was covered in the background, so...
I don't mean, I'm not trying to throw stones at anybody. I'm just, I'm, what I'm researching and what I'm looking at, if I look at letting them, they have guidelines. If I look at Mount Pleasant, they have guidelines. Any place I look that allows food or alcohol to be served on a city sidewalk, they have guidelines so that everybody's treated the same. And I just thought it was fair. Everybody is treated the same. Some places charge a lot of money to use that sidewalk.
We had that discussion about whether there should be a leave for that as well and that due diligence.
I mean, we're not talking just a couple hundred bucks here. We're talking $3,000, $4,000. So, I'm just looking for guidelines that everybody's treated the same.
That's a similar process we went through in that discussion, doing our due diligence to bring it to you. We talked about that at staff level and...
And if they are there, I don't think they're due diligence. That's just my...
That's fine. Thank you.
I think the zoning, the way that our zoning is, is detailed. I'm in favor of having alcohol sales downtown. I think it's the another branch for TJ's and any other pub that wants to expand their business during the warm months.
Again, the only thing she's requesting here is to be able to serve someone their drink while sitting outside enjoying their lunch or dinner. She's not asking for anything more than that. Yeah. Yeah, I just want to be clear. We had tables out there all summer long, no issues whatsoever. I applied for a liquor license to be, to be able to serve drinks in that area that we had all summer long. Liquor control is ready to approve it. I just need approval from the city. That's all I'm waiting for, and then we'll be able to just serve an alcoholic beverage out there in addition to the food and pop that we've been serving out there for five months now. So, that's really all I'm looking for.
Are you looking to do that the rest of this year or the season for that pretty much?
It depends on when I can actually get the license. I don't know how long it's, you know, would take for me to actually get the license once it gets approved. You know, if it's, yeah, the middle of December, it's probably just going to have to wait till next summer.
So, I guess for me, it's come down to, do we accomplish some standard rules that we use across the board, or do we approve each individual request?
Well, I think we can approve her selling liquor or drinks, and then if council decides to then institute some sort of guidelines, council can still do that and then issue that. She's just looking to want to sell if I...
Yeah, I'm in trouble.
And that's what the issue is right here. Can she sell someone a drink while they're sitting outside having a lunch or dinner?
I thought the issue was, not to be argumentative, the issue was can we use the sidewalk to do that?
Yeah, I already have.
I know, but that's what the issue is, is can I use the sidewalk to do that? We don't decide whether you can sell alcohol or not, the alcohol.
You just need to decide if I can serve alcohol on that sidewalk that I've already been using for food and pop.
My other concern is that, you know, how are you going to regulate having them not walk around with alcohol and then the other restaurants at River Street Station to follow your lead without being licensed there? Are we going to regulate to make sure that's...
That's, I mean, you know, we're not a bar, bar. We're not, you know, going to be, we're not open till 2 o'clock in the morning, and that was part of what liquor control looked at, you know, because it's not a permanent barrier. It is just designated area with planters, but it's right adjacent to the building, which they really liked, and, you know, we close at 10 o'clock during the week. We're not some crazy bar that we're open till 2 o'clock in the morning and people are going to be doing headstands out there. I just want somebody to be able to sit and drink above light and watch the great republic go through. Like, that's really all I want.
If we allow this and she finds she's having a difficult time controlling that, it's something that, or the city thinks she's not doing a good job, we can always come back and revoke.
Yeah, if there's any issues...
We violate their licenses.
There's a process, and just want to make council aware that right now, there's obviously no prohibitions on anyone putting tables and chairs out in front of their business and selling food or just sitting there and reading a book. This particular request requires council approval because it's one of the requirements of the liquor control commission. So, that's what it is. It's my understanding that anyone that has a liquor license downtown could apply for one of those to serve out on the sidewalk, and it's incumbent upon the license holder to monitor that activity because if they don't, their license can be revoked. And there's a process. If the police department has any dual problems with it, they can contact liquor control commission for an investigation, file complaints, and I'm certain that no current liquor license holder wants to go through that. So, I wouldn't see it being a problem of them walking down the street. It might happen once, but possibly never.
No. I mean, half of my staff is TAM certified. They have to be in order for me to serve alcohol, and then, you know, I don't ever foresee any issue. I mean, we handle things pretty easily.
Really, it has nothing to do with anything, but how do you plan to monitor? Can you help me with that?
We would have a designated server for that section.
That would be there pretty much all the time?
Yep, yep.
I have a question. I mean, there's going to be a lot of days that maybe the weather's not nice. Do you take the tables inside or you take the tables as...
We typically just...
How do you monitor when the tables go out?
Yep, we typically leave them inside. If it's raining, we leave them inside. Yeah.
Okay. And then if your staff, you'd probably take them off the sidewalk, so you'd keep all your staff inside. If you had one of those rare days where you didn't have enough staff.
Yeah, I mean, if we couldn't, you know, serve it properly, then, yeah, they would just stay inside.
Is there any other questions about the request to serve alcohol?
I still have the opinion that we should develop some standard guidelines that applies to all of the downtown area. I'm not opposed to the idea of alcohol sales on the sidewalk. I just, I just think we need to have, either like Mount Pleasant has done, in ordinance that specifies what the rules are and what the guidelines are for all the businesses concerned. And I'm opposed to the idea of doing a business at a time and applying, deciding every time something applies. I think we should have a standard set of rules, which the business staff...
Just quick.
Yeah, they have to apply for it.
That's not...
They have to anyways. Every time they apply from the liquor control, we have to group it before they go to, am I wrong?
Yes.
So, they're going to, no matter what, it's going to, every time, it's going to come to us.
We can't just, yeah.
But I can see your point. If you want to build some guidelines, work session, I understand that. I'm with you on that one. That is taking what she's asking here. And so, but yes, I, no matter what, if River Street Station decides they want to put chairs out, they're going to have to come in and ask us to approve their modification to their license. So, it's going to have to be piece by piece every time. It's the Alps, the Boathouse, every time. We're going to have to. That's part of our...
Yeah, council can work on those guidelines, but...
Yeah, because liquor control will need that from the city. They'll need approval from the city in order to get the license that they apply for.
But I think TJ's Pub has a good reputation of what they do and not having problems and issues. Personally, I don't have a problem authorizing this and having council work on those type of guidelines we'd like to see.
Mr. Taylor, if we approve this at this time, does that keep us from coming back and establishing guidelines or an ordinance that applies to the downtown area in general?
I know, I think that you'd still be able to do that. You know, this situation is kind of an unusual situation. Usually liquor control is pretty strict in everything that they do. I would have expected it would have required an expansion of your service area for your license, but it's not even that. All that liquor control requires is that you have the consent of the city to use its property to be able to serve. But as far as the way the city permits people to use its sidewalk in connection with their business, I think that's something that we can do. It's a health and safety issue, so I think it's something that, it's not like a legal nonconformant use would be in liquor zoning, so I think it's something that we can regulate even for someone that's already been granted the permission.
Whereas I know the Boathouse uses the deck behind their property for service, and they lease that from the city?
Exactly, yes. Which is the reason I suspect that they were able to get the approval of liquor control to be able to serve outside of their normal service area.
Thank you.
I want to thank you for being so patient and understanding. And I think that when we do decide to have rules or have guidelines, that you should be part of that discussion. You have first-hand knowledge of what's going on.
Yeah.
I think that would be great. I've been in areas, I've been down to Muskegon where they have it, I've been in areas where they, down to Grand Rapids, they don't even have barriers. They get a paintbrush and paint a line on the sidewalk. The liquor law is very vague about the barriers, you know, what you got to have. Some cities, a lot more, they have a 3-foot barrier, and that's part of an ordinance or guideline, so there's all different ways of doing it. I appreciate all you do, make the downtown look good.
Thank you.
Mayor, comments? Shall we please take the roll?
Councilmember Gudsky?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitlam?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Beeden?
Yes.
Councilmember Paniac?
Yes.
Councilmember Zelinski?
Absolutely.
And Mayor Kenny?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Next, we'll move on to notices, communication, and announcements. Whether part of each council meeting is report from a cooperating agency, organization, or department. Tonight, we have two. One from Mr. Clinton McHyven Corpus, who reports on activities to Housing Commission, and Mr. Alex Zachnally, who reports on activities to the Harvard Commission. First up, we have Mr. Clinton.
Hello, I'm Clint McHyven Corpus, Director of the City of Manistee Housing Commission. I think you have a packet that I've prepared for us, and there's extra copies for the audience in the back here. I wanted to take a moment to kind of highlight who and what the City of Manistee Housing Commission is. We are a public housing authority of the US Department of Housing and Urban Development, a public housing authority that delivers to program participants, the act for residents, the federal program of public housing only. We don't have any other subsidized housing other than public housing. What that means is that individuals who qualify receive subsidized rent in their rental unit that they receive, not like a Section 8 where they get cash to go to a private landlord or others, mishat. We're directly from the federal government, right to the unit. Those guidelines direct to and what types of services we can provide. The residents, program participants, have to qualify, the same as they qualify for TANF, welfare, SNAP, any other kind of federally funded financial subsidy or aid. And they have to qualify to get in, and they have to continue qualifying year after year after year. Sometimes residents think that we bug them ad nauseam, but when you receive federal subsidy in any form, you have to recertify every year and show your income. And the federal government watches that quite thoroughly through their own reporting systems, through the state level, social security, all the way, you know, up to the IRS, and then directly to HUD and other agencies. We're not a landlord, per se. We're a federal program that delivers subsidized housing. Therefore, we call our residents program participants. The program they're receiving is sheltered in the form of subsidized housing where they pay no more than 30% of their adjusted gross income. Adjusted gross income would be their total income reduced by medical costs, age, dependents, other federal things that allow to be written off to reduce their account. Their 30% includes utilities. So, we do have some instances where in providing utility allowance, we have residents who pay no rent at all because they receive the subsidy, and the minimum rent might be $50, but the utility payment allowance that we're supposed to give is $125. And so, we don't pay the residents, like some public housing authorities do, to live in our units. Rather, we pay directly to the utilities. I provide the opportunity to do one or the other, and we have chosen to pay directly to the utilities, those who are receiving an additional subsidy to include in full payment of the utilities. We're a local unit of government, and in being that way, we have regulations that guide and direct us, and I want to speak to those in a few moments here. The main one is the annual contributions contract, the ACC. The first one was signed on September 26, 1968, and it was signed by HUD and executed by HUD by the certified resolution of council of August 20, 1968. That contract between the City of Manistee and HUD established a few things, and these are just the tip of the iceberg. Regulatory oversight and ownership of HUD for the period of the original ACC and subsequent amendment of the ACC for continual financial, operational, and capital improvement funding. That means HUD owns the property. They own the ground. They own it all. Every year, we sign to continue to receive funding to support the organization directly from the federal government. The original contract was for 40 years. 40 years has expired, but every year, as we continue to receive the funding, that gets extended another year. We're tax-free, so to speak. The original contract created the PILT, the Payment in lieu of Taxes, and if I remember right, Ed, it was in around $36,000 this year. It's on 10% of our adjusted rent formula that's established by the federal government. And the agreement also states that our primary focus area is for people who are at 50% of area median income or 30%. We do have a lot of people that we're allowed to serve who are under the 80% of area median income. One of the handoffs I gave you was a breakout of what the area median income is for Manistee County. The area median income is $51,000 even. The last several years, it's been fluctuating right around the 49,000 to 52,000 dollar mark, up and down. And then you can see where it breaks down by family size. This is our initial guideline for bringing people into the public housing program. Neither the ACC nor the authorizing resolution contained in the certified minutes in the City of Manistee of August 20, 1968, that were submitted to HUD, to HUD establish or state that any of the properties were for senior, elderly, or disabled housing. It was assumed that all people who would qualify under 30% or 50% of AMI would be eligible. I've done some investigation, there's lots of original paperwork, but the primary documents, the certified minutes, and the ACC clearly state that those who qualify income are there. Now, after the signing of the contract in the early '70s, HUD allowed for designation of properties for a short period of time, for a five-year period, and then they had to be renewed. And administrations at that time, I think, might have applied and received that, but never re-upped that. And so, we have fallen back into the original ACC, which is called general population. So, we serve all of our 30%, 50%, and also 80% of area median income. As I mentioned, the primary governing contract is the ACC, but we also have the State of Michigan Public Act 18 of 1933 as amended, RCD Ordinance Number 270 as amended, 24 CFR, Code of Federal... Code of Federal Regulations, Chapter 9, and of course, the Federal Privacy Act. Let me share with you some demographics. HUD's looking into metrics. You know, Councilor Beaton wanted some humor, and statistics aren't very humorous. One of the things they measure by is occupancy. The push is ninety-seven percent, and we have two levels that HUD looks at. We have a total number of units that receive subsidy and a total number of units that are actually rentable out of those who receive subsidy. So the first column on the left is the total number of units that receive subsidy, not all of which are rentable. And on September 20th, we were at ninety-five percent. And out of those who are rentable, we're at ninety-six percent. Right now, in the county, the average rate is right around ninety-three percent occupancy. So we're not quite where HUD wants to be, but we're above where Manistee County occupancy rates are at. HUD also measures how long it takes you to turn a unit around, when a resident leaves and a new one comes in. You have twenty days to do that, tons of factors go into that. We try to look at it on a five-year basis and monitor it. Our current five-year average is thirty-five point oh four. Our current average in 2016 is seventy-three point sixteen. We have some reporting failures of staff that were corrected by removal, and now we're back to repartaining those statistics, and those numbers have been dropping. Let's talk about who lives at the public housing authority. The first section is property-wide. It's all our properties, Central Terrace, Harborview, and our scattered family sites. So if you look at the current family composition, we have forty-nine percent that are at age fifty-four or below, and then we have thirty-two percent at sixty-two or above, and nineteen percent at fifty-five to sixty-one. Kind of a fair split between. The number of disabled is about a fair split between the two, disabled and non-disabled. Break it down further, as into the head of household, you can see we break it down by female elderly, female near elderly, and so on. And the percentage living in our housing authority with children, you can see is that we have fifteen percent with children, eighty-five percent without a property, don't have children. Income. The next program-wide income level is that eleven thousand eight hundred and forty is the average amount of money that annually a program participant has that lives in any of our properties. All that total aggregate, though, brings in two million four hundred and fifty thousand eight hundred and six dollars to this community. And this chart breaks down how that money comes in, the bulk of which is by Social Security income. Then you can see on the next page after that, the target income that we serve, the eighty, the thirty, the eighty, fifty, and thirty percent, and then it broke down property-wide with the average monthly income is, rental charge is. The rental charge averaged across all properties averages two hundred and fifteen, and you can see we go from a one-bedroom, a four-bedroom at a hundred and one average, to a one-bedroom at two hundred and twenty-two average. How can that happen when you have a four-bedroom versus a one-bedroom? It's utility allowance. The more bedrooms, the higher the utility allowance, which then reduces the amount of rent charged to the tenant to keep within the thirty percent that we can charge by law. A quick look at Central Terrace. We can see that just about equally between age fifty-four and below and age fifty-five and above. Not quite as equal, but pretty close to equal, undisabled, in handicap, and that we have four percent of the population there are families with children. That building, the average annual income is nine thousand three hundred and fifteen dollars. Income that that building brings into the community is one million sixty-one dollars nine hundred and fifty-one. And the branch over there, we only have two bedrooms and one bedrooms. We only have five two-bedroom units out of the one hundred and nineteen. The rest are one-bedroom units. But the average rental cost for all across the board is two hundred and seven, whereas the two-bedroom is a hundred and seventy-nine, and the one-bedroom is two oh nine. What could affect the one-bedroom being higher than the two-bedroom? People who make a reasonable accommodation request for living aid, living aid's income is not to be calculated into the household income. It's a reasonable accommodation by law, which means that person to be able to live independently needs to have this assistance, and that assistance is provided either by payment of the individual or most likely by payment of the state or federal government, but it doesn't affect and increase their income whatsoever. Scattered sites, which is our family sites, is the next. You can see that that grouping, the majority are under the age of fifty-four, as you would suspect, because that's our houses that are throughout the city. If you're not familiar, we have a large population right by the Queens Park area, and then on 12th Street, and then a few scattered throughout the city. One on this side of town, on Jefferson. Majority of the folks in the family units are not disabled, and a majority do have children in that household, in their households. The income there is slightly higher. They tend to be working families there. We have a sixteen thousand dollar annual average income, and their input to the city is about seven hundred and twenty thousand dollars. The last one I just want to briefly go over is Harborview. Harborview, you can see that majority of the people that live in Harborview are age sixty-two plus, and the minority are those age fifty-four and below. Majority of the people in Harborview are not disabled, and there are no heads of households with children in that building. The average income in Harborview is thirteen thousand one hundred and twenty-four, and they bring in about six hundred and sixty-eight thousand to our community. I thought some statistic might help you understand the population that we serve, who we serve, and how it's distributed throughout our buildings to give you a sense of the program that the federal government is putting into our community through the City of Manistee Housing Commission. If you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer.
I do. I want to thank you for everything. I just have a couple of questions. Do you monitor, does the Housing Commission monitor the usage of utilities?
Yes. We have a twenty-year energy performance contract between HUD and Siemens Corporation and ourselves, and every meter reading, every dollar cost, every utility is recorded, submitted to HUD, and recorded and submitted to Siemens Corporation. So we know exactly what unit is getting what. Central Terrace, there is no individual monitoring because it's by bulk of the building. Harborview, the residents pay for electricity, and so that amount, we cannot monitor because it is in their individual names, and so it comes back to us. But the water is monitored and measured by us. The family sites, we monitor the water closely, but, and we have a few of the units where electricity remains in our name because of the way the single families were divided into duplexes. But beyond that, if it's in the resident's name, we don't have control of monitoring it. But every place that we're able to monitor, you know, we have a full report that we give on a monthly basis to both organizations, and then aggregate is required to HUD in order to get subsidy for next year.
Is there, so second question. Is there a level that you have designated for that, for those units? And if there's any overage, what happens?
They get charged.
They get charged?
Yes.
Okay, good. Tenants, when a tenant leaves one of facilities, if there is damage, are they held responsible? Just like a normal landlord group?
Yes. They're held responsible on a couple of levels. One is financially, if we're able to get a judgment, and we try to collect, but the population we serve are not always able to collect. But whether we have a judgment or not, the federal government requires that, they're already entered into what's called the Enterprise Income Verification System, and that system has all of our income, and all the monies that we earn, retirement, pensions, whatever, it knows it all. And we record to them that the tenant was abandoned, evicted, they left on good terms, they left damaged, and it states in there that any dollars that are owed to this public housing authority have to be paid back to us before they're allowed to receive any additional federally subsidized housing subsidy. So if they went from public housing to a Section 8, they would be declined until they paid us. If they went to rural development, they would be declined. If they went to mishda, they would be declined until they have to pay us back. So it's, the only issue with that system is it's not a three-month lag, so you gotta, which is better than it was, it was a six-month lag, but it's a three-month lag now. So we record in there that people owe us money, and if they pay it, then they get to go into the place they're applying for. However, if you're evicted from public housing, then you hit the bottom, and it's in the EIBs, being evicted from public housing, and you're not eligible for any further federally subsidized program for housing.
Okay, all right. Just two more. There's been an issue on Sixth Avenue with smoking. Been some complaints, and I know Chief Buckland's crew's been, you know, in on this, and can you tell us where you're at with that? Because you have taxpayers, you know, with groups of people smoking across the street or on city-owned property, but, you know, I surely wouldn't want cigarette smoking wherever they're doing, blowing their house. So if you could walk us through that, please.
Well, I have to divide it. On a personal level, there's a lot I wish I could do. As the Director of a HUD agency, there's restrictions on what I can do. HUD determined and declared that we had to turn that facility, all of our properties, into non-smoking. And in fact, and is eligible by law in the State of Michigan for any facility, apartment complex, to do that. And there's over fifty percent of apartment complexes in the State of Michigan have banned smoking in all their facilities and grounds. HUD was here for the annual visit about two weeks ago, and we did a tour of about fifteen units that they selected, the one we're going to see, and we stumbled into two of the units where tenants were smoking. And the first thing out of HUD's mouth was, "You're evicting them, right?" And when they came outside, there are people smoking across the street, and then they said, "That's not our property, right?" I said, "No." They said, "Okay." So HUD's concern is that on federal property, there's a no-smoking ban, and they instituted and made us do that. And they require that it has to be fifty feet away from the end of their property. And that means people have to find a way to go. They prohibited us from putting any kind of smoking booth on their property to allow people to go outside and smoke.
How can they ban you fifty feet if it's not their property? If it's their property, you can...
You can't be within fifty feet of their property to smoke, which is a standard level that is across the State of Michigan, not meant up to. But yeah. So it leaves us with a conundrum. I keep on asking residents to find better places to smoke, you know, to be good neighbors, and so on, but I don't have control. The Housing Commission does not have control over people's actions beyond their residence within the housing authority. And it kind of stuck there. I'm not allowed to spend federal dollars to build a place to go smoking, nor am I allowed to put it on federal property.
I have a question. You talked about eviction, and it goes on some of the list in the Black Ball. You also talked about not paying, lack of payment, or they destroy something, they don't be paid. Sometimes life just deals you, you know, a bad hand. Is there any exceptions to this? Is there any hearing process the people could go through, or is this carved in stone?
When they go through court to get a judgment, that's their, the due process, that's there. But with the EIB system, we have probably about half a dozen tenants that are listed in EIB system that owe us money, who are deceased, and you don't come off the system that the federal government. I don't control that system, and I don't make the rules that control it. So their concern is you damaged property, you owe money, you know, and you're getting your rent subsidized, so you're only paying thirty percent of your income anyways. So they're after us to collect everything we can, and we don't, we're not successful with all that given.
So if I hear you're right, you're saying there is no exception. If they didn't pay their rent, they got evicted, they're not going to go into any subsidized housing, period. There's no hearing they can have, there's no...
To be evicted, you have to go to court, and that's the due process. I don't evict you by saying, "You're gone. George and I go to court." There's a whole eviction process that's required, and the judge makes the order.
But then that bars them from ever going back into any type of HUD housing, is that what you're saying?
If they're evicted for owing us money, and they pay the money back, they can go back into any HUD housing. If they're evicted for material violation, criminal offense, major destruction of property, those kind of items at that, then they're barred at that point.
Mr. Zelinski, maybe I could add as well, and Clint does this all the time. People have hardships, people run into issues in their life, and Clint is able to work with a lot of those people, setting up payment agreements where they fall behind because of something that's happened. He won't necessarily evict someone under that circumstance. He has some leeway under the HUD rules to be able to let that person make up the payments that they've missed so that they can retain their...
That's what I was wanting to hear.
But if they don't make them up, I still have to pursue that, you know? So we try, you know? We try to help as much as we can, and we tell residents, "If you know something's coming up, you know you need to get your muffler fixed, and your rent's coming up, you know, call my program director, and he'll make arrangements ahead of time." It's better to let us know on the front end than on the back end, because on the back end, then you got a fifty-dollar late fee. On the front end, if you tell us, there's no late fee, and we'll try to work with you.
Working in social work, we actually, as a social worker, I understand that sometimes life just deals you a bad deck of cards, and things can go bad really, really quick, and I like to get people over whenever I can.
I do too, but the atmosphere of Congress has changed over the eleven years I've been here, and the atmosphere of Congress is, public housing has uncollected funds. Why do they collect them? And so we have to give the effort to do that, because our elected officials require that of us.
Thank you. My question, I'm sorry. Getting back on smoking. So HUD, HUD does not allow any type of smoking booth or anything on the grounds.
Yeah.
How do they handle that in the government, then, with smoking, you know?
Well, I know that when I've had to be at the field office for different meetings and such, you have to dump your cigarettes at the first barrier before going into building, and so you're like two hundred feet away from the building if you have to dump it. And they don't have any smoking booths or anything. So workers have to go past the first barriers. So off that property.
Okay. And last question, and I appreciate everything, so thank you. The residents, are they mostly local or from the county city, or are they from, are they outside of the county?
The vast majority of our residents originated from Manistee County. When I first got here, we were able to do a preference for the City of Manistee, and that was changed by congressional law. And there are some housing authorities that are in urban settings that have very geographical barriers, but in the more rural settings, they've opened it up... areas, but in the more rural settings, they've opened it up. So we have to take anyone from anywhere, but majority, and I'm thinking like 90, 92% or so, are right from Manistee County, and probably about 50, 60% are right from the city of Manistee for origination.
Do you have a waiting list?
Yes.
Approximately how many?
I didn't bring that information with me, but I know our... We have a great need for two bedrooms. We don't have enough two bedrooms to meet the waiting list demand. Yes, I think 15, 20 families waiting on that list. And we're talking preferences here, you know, HUD, through Congress, has made a real emphasis on housing veterans and housing the homeless. And pushing it that we house them first priority-wise, and we house them without income verification, which is an override of part of the eligibility. So if we have a veteran that comes in and qualifies, or a homeless person that comes in and qualifies, then we bring them in regardless of if they have the ability to pay their first month rent and security deposit. They are expected to pay after that, but we do payment arrangements to bring them in because of the emphasis...
Now, do you have... Are they furnished, the apartments, or so they have to bring everything?
Usually those, the VA is bringing someone in. They bring in lots of assistance to help with that.
Thank you very much.
I have a question, a couple of questions. And you may not know the answer, so I'm not holding your feet to the fire to have those answers handy. I'm curious, with Olson's closing, how many people from the Sixth Avenue facilities walked to Olson's? Do you have any idea how that impacted their life?
Well, I... My guesstimate is about 50% in the two buildings use Olson's, and probably 10 to 20%, typically a century terrorist, even higher amount, walked there, you know, every day. And I know it's inconvenient to me, because I went there for lunch every day. But yeah, it's a big hurt. And the residents, you know, Wes is really good. They bring their... They'd walk back with a cart and everything, and every so often Wes would pop and say, "Hey, I'm missing about 20 carts." So we send maintenance up, look all around the north end, and there we find them loading our trucks and take them back. But, you know, he was really good. You know, allowed that to happen, you know, for folks, you know? But now, you know, people are having to take a dial ride, and there's a limitation of baggage they can take on a dial ride, and, you know, and how often, you know, they can go and stuff.
So bottom line, it has been a hardship.
Yes.
Close to maybe 50% of the people that live there.
Yeah.
Something we should be aware of in trying to fill that space that Olson's making it.
Yeah. It'd be great to have something with a walking distance, even if it was a smaller store that had a lot of the basics, you know, for folks.
I have a question. Is there a percentage that you have to give to each type of population per service? For instance, like you have to have maybe 50% from disabled, or is there anything in that kind of guidelines that you have to follow?
The guideline is that the... We have to have near 50% who are at 50% of AMI or 30% of AMI unless the AMI in the area is such that it boosts it up, so that we have to pull people in from the 80% of AMI. So if you look at our aggregate, the majority of our folks come from the 80% of the AMI. And that's because we need to maintain occupancy levels to do that. Did that make sense? I threw a lot of acronyms in there.
Yeah. And then you said the veterans, when they come to you, do they... So they don't have to wait on the waiting list? They just get it done?
No, there's laws that have been signed that boosts veterans and homeless over time.
I have some questions on vacancy and term time. Lease-up days, what does that tell us?
You have... The keys get turned to us, this is the one-day thing. Then you have maintenance turn days, the number of days it takes to turn the unit to get ready for the next. Then you have the lease-up days, which is management reviewing those who are eligible to receive the housing. And we usually have five to eight applications going at once. Our application process, a new lease-up has a folder about that thick. And so we can't put them in if they can't give us their social security card. And so we have to wait and wait. We can't put them in if we don't have a true copy of their driver's license. We can't put them in if we don't have a true copy of their birth certificate or something in the state saying they applied for their birth certificate. Or they don't have a social security card, something from the Social Security Administration that they have that. Then we have to get verification of income from the banks, from any source they have for income. And then we have to get verification of their deductions. So if they're claiming medical deductions, that means they have to supply us with a tall, much record of all medical costs for us to review.
Okay, because, you know, we show a very high occupancy rate in the high 90% range, but for 2016, we showed 64 units turned and vacancy day average of 73 days?
Um, so how do I state this? We had... George, you know it happens, that's why I say that.
What was it, the 73 days it says on the number? Is that just the total of the column or something?
That's our statistical average because of the reporting issues we have with the former employee.
Oh, yes.
And it's significant increases from 2015 to 16.
I'm asking my council for advice on how to answer this question because it involves personnel issues.
Yeah, there was a personnel matter that it turned out that there was inaccurate reporting, and part of that number is the correction of the errors in the reporting that were occurring. I don't know specifically the number.
We corrected the numbers to the true numbers, which brought our statistics from the low side to the high side. And now we've been bringing them down. I believe that I want to deal with the true numbers and deal with them and not the misrepresented numbers.
Correct. Those numbers are significantly outside the range that HUD expects to be met with their criteria.
Yeah, and they're fully apprised of exactly what happened with the reporting and such. But I don't know.
The numbers are corrected numbers. Initially, that year, if you looked at that same report, it wasn't anything close to those numbers. And Clinton was not aware of that. When it was discovered that the numbers were inaccurately reported at HUD, then the correction was made.
And we discovered that internally, and then reported to HUD, that there was errors being reported by staff, and they corrected that.
I just have one quick question, one more. A while ago, a few years ago, there was a lot of going on with HUD, and there was a lot of interaction with HUD. Is that now smoothed out pretty well? And are there people that HUD's working better with us now, or...
Yes, we're considered a high performer.
Oh, great.
Nationally. So that qualifies us for a few extra bucks on our capital funds and, you know, minimal oversight.
I know for a while, it was pretty tough.
Yeah, yeah. So we're one of the gold stars right now.
Great.
Thank you for your presentation. Next one here from Mr. Alex Zachnelli, who required activities to the harbor commission.
You all have a copy, should I read it? Harbor commissioners are Dave Bachman, Harbor Master Fritz Bone, Ty Cook, Jim Smith, myself, John Zaring, Rod Zelinski, and the city manager, Ted Taylor. 216 season was good. We were up a lot of numbers, and if you can see on the report, there's boat days, and they're explained. As of the end of September, we were up 464 boat days. The docked sails through the end of August, those numbers are wrong. The numbers are for July and August only. I misread the information I got. And we don't have the final numbers on boat launch revenue. The big thing here is our plan for 2017. We met with Tamara Beswinka with AES, and she helped us formulate a plan and single out a goal, and we need to increase revenue down there. After we decided what we wanted to do, we figured out the best way to do it is to get some brains involved, and we invited Catherine Kenney and Merrily Cook from the Visitors Bureau. And they came in and showed us basically how to maximize our advertising dollars and how to target market the boats or the people that own boats that we wanted to get to. Merrily is gonna... Merrily has given us a proposal to take over our advertising for less than our budget. We're going to discuss it at our next meeting, and we'll probably go clean marina certification. Chief Bachman has been heading this up, and we're recertified. The big thing that impressed me about that whole report was there's only 10% of the marines in the country designated clean marinas, and we've been certified two renewals. We're in our 111th year. That's about it. We have a first-class marina, we got a great harbor, we're downtown, we have haul-out facilities, repair facilities. The only downside we have now is Olson's closed. Voters can't get to the grocery store, but we're working on that.
Any questions?
No, I have a question. The boat days?
Yes.
The boat days. I see that the numbers are increasing. What are the total number... What's the total capacity of boat days? How many boat days do we have?
Depending on the size of the boat, and let's see, how many slips?
I mean, roughly, I mean, if we had 2,197 boat days this past season, what's our extra capacity that we're not using? I'm trying to get to.
I don't have the answer to that, but I can tell you it's significant because our season starts in May, and we don't really start filling up until late June. So all June, half of May were significantly under capacity. Then again, in September, we close September 30th until September, when school starts, 400 capacity. So our boat season is long, and our capacity is high. A better question might be what's our capacity for June, July, and August, our prime time? And I don't have the answer either. But we have 36 boat slips, we have 300 feet of wall space, and depending on the size of the boat that comes in. So if you get a 60-foot boat, it takes one slip, or two 30-foot boats in that same slip, two 30-foot would double the boat days versus 160, but the cost would be the same, you're trying by the foot. So it's not an easy answer.
It's not an easy answer, but maybe sometime we could have that answer or a rough estimate of what they'll...
A rough estimate, probably good.
Yeah, I mean, I understand the different sizes of the boats, I understand that.
Any more?
I just want to congratulate Chief Bachman and the marina staff for achieving the clean marina inspection. Thank you. Next, we'll move on to the consideration of board of director candidates for the MML liability and property pool. Two members of the MML liability and property pool board of directors are seeking reelection. As member of the liability and property pool, the city is asked to vote on the two incumbents or offer write-in candidates. At this time, council could take action.
I don't know either of the two candidates. I'm rather hoping that maybe our city manager might know them or have some...
I know one, I know Penny Hill from Traverse City. I would give her an unqualified recommendation. I'm not familiar with the lady from Menominee. But again, if they're being recommended by the MML, by the liability, well, I think that's the direction that council should go.
Well, she has six years of experience, and she's currently serving as mayor of the city of Menominee. Sounds like she qualifies to me.
I think we still need a motion.
I'll make that motion. Second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Whitless, supported by Councilmember Zelinski, to take action to approve the two incumbents during the other discussion. Michelle, will you please take the roll?
Councilmember Whitless?
Yes.
Councilmember Gidsby?
Yes.
Councilmember Pontian?
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton?
Yes.
Mayor Kenny?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Zelinski?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Next, we'll move on to concerns and comment. It's an opportunity for citizens to comment on municipal services, activities, or areas of city involvement. Citizen tendents shall be recognized by the mayor for comments, which are limited to five minutes, and letters will not be publicly read. Is there anyone who'd like to comment? So now we'll move on to officials and staff.
Just want people to know that we have absentee ballots available. Going out fast and furious.
City manager?
Nothing, Your Honor.
City attorney?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Finance director?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Public safety director?
I do, Your Honor. I want to give a just quick update on our advanced life support, our ambulance service. We started doing advanced life support transports on March 27th, 2013, and we started generating various revenue. And we are still working on education requirement for some of our employees. I'm pleased to say that this month, we collected a $1 million in revenue in ALS Services, not billed, collected in the bank, $1 million bucks. That's a huge milestone for us. And lastly, my last guy finished paramedic classes in September. He'll be licensed, he'll take the national road retest later on this year, he'll be licensed as a paramedic. So every member of the city fire, other than myself, will be a licensed paramedic, which is a pretty big deal for all of us. So thank you for your support. It's been a lot, and it's a huge milestone, so thank you very much.
Councilmember Beaton?
I just want to tell everybody to have a good weekend. I just feel good that we haven't seen any snow yet, so I'm hoping that we have a nice extended autumn.
Councilmember Zelinski?
I would defer your suggestion that we have a way of doing the subject of all the cafes on the work session. How do I do that? How do I... Do we need more than one person to...
No. Okay, that's what council would like, we can work it into a work session.
I would like to see a discussion on it and see where it goes. Other than that, I have nothing.
Councilmember Gidsby?
I have nothing, but I...
I'm for what you're saying. I support that.
Councilmember Smith?
No.
Councilmember Whitless?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Councilmember Pontian?
I just want to remind everybody that Paint the Town Pink is Thursday, and everybody go out and support them.
I do have one thing. Next week, the Revenue Sharing Board is meeting to hear grant applications, and those would be awarded in December. I sit on that board, but I will not be on council in December. So I'm appointing Councilmember Gidsby on the Revenue Sharing Board in my place. And I chose him because of his years of service on 911, his job, he works at the prison, and his knowledge of our public safety, the people in our safety programs. He has a good knowledge of what's going on in our county. And since the grants are the first, the majority of our four public safety grants, I think Councilmember Gidsby has a good handle on our needs for the county. So I will be appointing Mr. or Councilmember Gidsby to the Revenue Sharing Board.
Thank you.
With that, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
I'll take it.
Sorry.